Okay, I think everybody's here with the board and our interpreters are here. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. We have a very short agenda. We only have one item that we need to take action on, and that is the report. And I hope everybody has their copy of the report. And we have, this is, so all of you will know, the 12th, 12th draft of this report. So I'm going to open the floor for discussion. If anybody has any questions, anything they want to talk about, now's the time. Okay, Candace?
Yes, I would like to go ahead and open with first the edits. We do have a clean format now, similar to what we had with previous reports. I have emailed to Tanya for her to go ahead and send that to everyone. There are several additions and some questions and some sentencing, you know, different phrasing that I'd like to go ahead and discuss with you all here. So I guess let's go ahead and start at the stop, or if you wanted to start at the top, or you want to just go ahead and take turns each person, how would you like to manage that?
Well, Candace, why don't you go ahead and start since your guts flow? Tanya?
Okay. Dr. Tate, did you say you emailed it to me?
Tea, this is the interpreter, is that Tanya? Sandy, I emailed directly to Sandy.
Okay, I'm so sorry, I thought I heard my name, sorry, you're good.
So hopefully Sandy, I don't know.
I have not sent that out. I did not send that. I thought that we were not, alright.
Do you want to go ahead and do that?
Yeah, alright, everybody just hold where you are for a minute.
Okay, so now Tammy. I'm not sure if the interpreter could see Tammy, and I'm sorry I had pinned Dr. T. I'm sorry I had you pinned, pinned, hang on one second. One second. Okay, so I have requested Aaron's permission from, for me to go ahead and share my screen. So if we can go ahead, let's see if we could do that.
Wait a minute, I don't know if you can see me, but I'm sending this report. Okay, but that should have run out, everybody should have. Okay, Candace?
Okay, so if you could see me, I just want to check in. And my screen.
Tammy's asking if we can make the screen bigger?
Okay, did that work?
Mark?
Tammy's saying, no, I lost it, it's black. And so all I see is black now.
Now.
Perfect, Tammy's saying, yep, thumbs up.
Okay, so everyone could see that now?
Yeah.
So the legislative. Accredations.
Accredations.
Accredations. And corrections. So the first one, that phrasing, the sentence doesn't make sense.
Okay, all of this, the summary and the legislative corrections, all came from the lawyers, except for number five down there.
Yes.
And.
Added number five. Because that was the discussion related to the report. The state agency that is responsible for that.
This is Hannah, can we go all the way back up to the top? Because it looks like we're missing that funding essentials, or I can't see it. I just see the legislative corrections.
It's at the top of that.
Right, there was something that I wanted to mention. The recurring $400,000, when I spoke with the budget office, they recommended that that be non-recurring the first year, since we don't know exactly what the expenses are. It was recommended that year one for 2425 be non-recurring. And then after that, when we're moving forward, it would be recurring when we had a more exact figure.
When did we note that?
Well, it was mentioned in the meeting that you and I had with Mickey. And then it was also mentioned in, when I did my discussion with Kristen Holly and Alex Modesto, when we were doing those ABC recommendations, that list.
So this hasn't been discussed with any of the lawyers?
No ma'am, just the budget.
Okay. It's like I said, this page, the whole page, the summary, funding essentials, legislative corrections, all of that was cleared by the lawyers. The three lawyers met and went over these. So I mean, we can change it any way you want to.
Well, I mean, it's your report, I was just going based on what budgetary, we're not taking out the $400,000, just instead of recurring, they recommended non-recurring so that we're not getting $400,000 if we only need $200,000 versus we're not asking for $400,000 every year if we're going to need $600,000. So it was saying just for the first year to be non-recurring, so we could see exactly what those figures needed to be.
Okay.
Wallace, do you want to say something?
Sure. Just on the point that Hannah was just making. If we did want to consider a change, because you raised a good point, what if $400,000 actually isn't enough for what our ongoing needs will be? Probably our counsel has already considered that, but to her point, if we did want to make a change to that, maybe what we could say is, you know, $400,000 for this upcoming fiscal year, and then, then we'll have a better idea of what the recurring need will be, and we can remake our request at that time. But maybe our lawyer's thinking was, let's just go ahead and get the recurring now while we're at it, and if it needs to be adjusted later.
Wallace, you froze, I didn't, I didn't hear what you said.
Maybe we should get rid of the reoccurring for this year, Tammy's saying?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm going to say something here that was.
So I think we should just get rid of that, and then add for this year, financial. I'm Tammy speaking.
Okay. Ray?
I just want to clarify some things, everyone's talking at the same time, and there's a lot of overlap. So if you could just wait a minute, maybe count, you know, one, two, three, four, before you're, you start your comment, I can't see who's talking with all the overlap. So it's hard for me to follow. Is that mine if we just take a minute in between each person to just maybe count one, two, three, so I could see who's talking? It's hard for me to follow and then watch the interpreters, I have no, I'm lost, I have no idea what's going on. So I apologize, if we could just be mindful of that.
Okay, I'm going to make a suggestion, I can only see six people. I cannot see anybody else. I don't know who's got a hand up or anything else, so it's very difficult for me to know myself who's talking. Yes.
In the top right of the Zoom window, if you click on view, you will see side-by-side speaker, side-by-side gallery.
Yes.
Gallery is what you want, so then you can see everyone, you know, and scroll through everybody. Unfortunately, this is how it is whenever you're in a share screen session.
Okay, well, I've done that, and I still have six people.
Yep, you have to scroll through, that is a Zoom limitation.
Okay.
While you're in a share screen session.
Well, I'm just going to have to bounce up and down to see who's speaking. Okay, Tammy, I see a hand up.
Bounce to the top, if they're actually audibly speaking, when the interpreter's voice it will change up.
Tammy?
So it's Tammy here, I think if you just click the hand raise, that person can click and have their hand raised, I can show you. It's a reaction, reaction, you can have a hand raise, and then that'll show, and you can notice the hand raise. And then as far as technology, if you're savvy, you can have one screen a little bigger and one screen a little smaller. You can adjust what you're seeing as far as the view on the screens. So you can make one smaller and one bigger, you can kind of play around with that. Can you see everyone if you use the gallery and you move it? Are you able to see everybody?
No.
Jamie, interpreter switch. Hmm, interesting, Tammy's saying?
Okay. Candace, are you talking now?
Tammy's saying, are you using a laptop or an iPad? Which one are you using? Because iPads are more limited, a laptop is better.
I'm using a laptop.
Click side-by-side gallery?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now on the right-hand side, you, beside everyone's pictures, you should see two little lines that you can hover your cursor over, and will change to a side-by-side arrow that will allow you to drag the screen to the left to be more people.
No, I've, no, I've got everybody down the side, I've got Candace's thing all on one side, and that's all I've got. There's no lines or anything else. So if the interpreters could help me out, when they see a hand raised, just ask me to stop or ask the speaker to stop, and we'll see if we can get the questions answered, okay? Okay.
Dr. Tate has her hand up. So I have a suggestion as far as for the board, as far as picking one person who can lead the meeting, and then pick whose turn, like, to go kind of help manage the communication.
Who has a full screen?
Dr. Tate, Candace, anyone else?
Well, I guess you'll lead it, Candace, because I don't have a screen that I can see everybody.
Okay, so I don't mind. So I can see, I can see everybody, everyone on the board, the members, plus a few additions in the audience. So we're going to go back to the report and on the screen, so you can pull that up on your screen. Is everyone good, everyone can see that? Good? Yes? Okay, so now, we're going to review, summarize two parts. The finance and edits, that what's been fixed. So it's about, there's different messages about editing?
Candace? I need to interject one thing here, Hannah said that the funding essentials are non-recurring, and I just want to inform everybody that Chris, our lawyer, asked me this morning to send this part, the funding essentials, on to Representative Blackwell, and that is gone. Forgot about that until just now, but that has already gone to the legislature. I can make an amendment when we send the report. I just want everybody to be aware. Okay, Candace, back to you.
So right now, we can just kind of summarize the different parts. So my recommendation for this, the full, is to get rid of, to get rid of this full page, get rid of this full page. Because it's a duplicate from up top. So that's my recommendation. Wallace, do you have something?
Yes, okay, if I speak, Ms. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't want to talk over anybody. Okay, I was just asking, Candace, I can't see a page number, which page of the document is displayed right now?
Three. Well, four, she's got it as four.
Okay. This, this seems to be different from the draft that you sent yesterday that I reviewed this morning.
Yes, Wallace, this is, this was sent about an hour ago. I just sent it to you about 15 minutes ago.
I see, okay.
So for this page, really, it's kind of our start as far as our summary. The original summary from before, when the lawyer added their summary paragraphs portions. So do you guys agree, or are you okay with that? Tammy said yes. Mickey's hand is up.
Yes, I noticed that when I reviewed it, and I agree that they say the same things in basic, just in different formats.
Yep, Sandy?
Okay, what this page is doing is it is explaining the summary that was given in the first page.
Okay.
This summary in the first page is the funding essentials, that's what we're asking for, we're asking for the money, and we're asking for the positions. This explains where they are, what we're doing with them. All it is, is a clear, just a explanation of what this summary said. Now, if we're going to take this page out, we need to rephrase this first page and take summary off of it. Like I said, this has been reviewed and done by the lawyers, so if you're going to change this in a drastic way, then it will have to go back to the lawyers, and it will have to go back to Mark, and everything will have to be redone. And I'll remind you that legislature started today. We were hoping to send this off tonight, so let's think in those terms as we move forward.
Wallace has his hand up.
Go ahead. Wallace? Wallace?
Sorry, I was on mute. I, I, um, I did have one question for the board, I noticed on the cover page that it has the date submitted of tomorrow, which is our goal. It says due date of March 15th, which was the original due date. My question is, obviously this makes it look like we submitted it late. So my question is, should we put the extended deadline, due date here?
And, and this is Mark. Wallace, I think that that is an exceptional idea. Additionally, in, in the, in the middle column where it says interim report to the State Board of Ed and the Joint Legislative Education Oversight Committee, actually, this report isn't to the State Board of Ed, it's only to the joint over, the joint oversight committee. So I would also make the recommendation that to the State Board of Ed be removed, because it, that, the, the report is not being sent to them, it will go straight to J-Lo.
What, what is the extended due date again? Was it March 31st? I'm trying to remember if we wanted to change it to that.
It was the, the approval from Mr. Blackwell was two weeks. So 15 plus 14 is the 29th.
Okay. Perfect.
Are we good? Good thumbs up? Okay. Next.
Okay, are we deleting page four?
What do you guys think Candace is saying? I don't want to go back to the lawyer, Tammy says. Wallace says he agrees. Mickey's hand is up. Go ahead.
Yes, I, I'm going to go back on what I just said, I understand now, and I, when I read it, I did realize, but I had forgot, excuse me, I had forgotten, but yes, I think we need to leave it the way it is, because it is a more detailed explanation than in the summary.
Yes.
Leslie?
We're going to do an interpreter switch real quick.
And go ahead, so Leslie, you want to say something?
Do, but not on page four, so do you want to come back to me? Because I want to go back to page three for just one second. So if you want to finish four, I can come back. I know this has already been submitted, but on page three, the very last one, number five, I just have a quick question on that. It says that we should report directly to the respective state agencies rather than the school directors or the board of trustees? Can I just get clarification on who the respective agencies are going to be?
Candace, let me say one thing before you start. Leslie, the legislative corrections has, that has not been submitted.
Okay.
Only the financials.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay, Candace?
So that, so for number five, that sentencing, that's mine, again, I'm the one that phrased that, I added that in there. So I wanted to bring that up to the board for discussion, because typically, my understanding of the state agencies is that HR generally has had to elevate up, take it up, they have to kind of write in there, a line to the state, HR or SHR basically has to go up, up the chain, instead of directly to the director of that agency. So that's how, that's why we're here, and I had added that at the Houghton Hospital, Houghton Hospital? I'm sorry.
Wrong.
Broughton Hospital, Broughton Hospital, thank you. I think it's just too much for this meeting to go ahead and get into, and we can take, go ahead and make modifications later to that. But that's just kind of my thoughts on, on that, on that piece.
I understand, I just wanted to make sure I was saying privately, so thank you.
Okay, we need to, we need to do something about that page, because the report has to be clean. I mean, if, if you don't, if you want to leave it in, we need to decide that, if you don't want to leave it in, we need to decide that. So.
And Tammy had had her hand raised. Go ahead, Tammy. This is Tammy here. So we just. So we just discussed this, so we've been kind of jumping back and forth. So we're talking about the reoccurring, right? Do we have to agree if we're taking that out or leaving that in? Is that what we're talking about? The, the phrasing of reoccurring? I just want to clarify.
Number five, that was in the legislative corrections.
Oh, this is Tammy, okay. And this is Candace, yes, so right. So Sandy commented and her comments are in regards to this page that's already been, already been submitted.
Not the whole page Candace, just the funding.
Okay, and this is Candace, so for number three. Now Wallace had mentioned and had recommended, well, that we, I guess we want the responsibility for all contracts right away. Wallace, go ahead.
Okay, it's Wallace. I, I was just raising the question in my comments that I made to the draft that Sandy sent yesterday. I reviewed it this morning and when I read number three, which I think must have come from the lawyers. And so I just didn't understand the context for it. Maybe Sandy and Candace and others do, but I was just raising the question. Do we as the board want to be directly responsible for all contracts? That just seemed like, that seemed pretty broad to me.
Wallace, we will be responsible for all contracts, but what the lawyers, and, and when I say lawyers, I explained this in an email that I sent yesterday, that all three lawyers have been in conversation. The lawyers for us, the lawyer for Governor Morehead and the lawyer for Eastern. And when I sent this out, I described the fact that they have been in discussion and they have looked at the reports and what they had to ask everybody to do was to get our funding and our legislative corrections lined up so that they synced. All, all three schools were asking for the same thing. The reason this is in here to be starting on May 1st, DPI, from what I understand, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, will renew the contracts for 24, 25. We cannot justifiably talk about contracts for any employees at this time. Half of us have not even met them. We just can't do that. So the lawyers ask if the boards would be okay with DPI renewing the contracts and then the, the authority for renewing contracts will be transferred to the Board of Trustees by July 1. Now the lawyers put this sentence in here about the authority to approve policies starting on May 1st and then to enter certain contract renewals starting on May 1st. They, the lawyers themselves will define those contracts. I know everybody is really feeling overwhelmed, you're not by yourself. This is a massive thing to undertake, but we do have legal help and assistance now. It's really, I can't say this enough, it's really nobody's fault that we're in this position except for DPI. And for eight months, they've not given us a lot to go on or do. And now in eight weeks, they want everything transferred. So the lawyers are working on that, they understand that and they're working on that. So if you have any questions about these dates, I would say let's just leave this alone, the legislature will do what they will do with it.
Hannah has her hand raised.
This is Hannah, I do just have a question. When you talk about contracts, are you talking about teacher contracts and HR contracts? Or are you talking about purchasing contracts?
I can't answer that Hannah, I don't know. I'm just telling you what the lawyers have put into the document and what they have suggested we do. Like I said, I think we just leave this and, and the legislature will, there's a new bill come, a bill addition coming out pretty soon from what I understand this morning. And I think we'll all have a better understanding of what that is when that bill is done.
And this is Mark, Hannah and Sandy, thank you. It is, the word certain throws me and in the draft, I had highlighted that. And so the reason, the reason why I was not sure, but I believe that certain is the, is the certified 115C contracts. Or because there was an additional sentence in a previous draft that mentioned that. And we have NCSD this year has no non-renewals of contract. And so that's excellent for us. And policy, state board policy drives the renewal of a one-year, a two-year or a four-year contract. So that makes it pretty simple for what we have to do because we have to actually follow policy for those. And then once we follow that policy, then they go up for additional approvals. So I, I think that that's what, what the meaning of it was, was the 115C certified teacher contracts.
And Mark, I think you're correct on that because I think you discussed with Chris that you had no non-renewals.
Correct.
So I think that's, I think that's what this is all about. Like I said, the three lawyers got together, they put this together and they've asked the three boards to submit it.
Okay, this is Candace. So next, moving down. See, looks like it's all very similar, all the same. Same, all of us is the same. Now. Wallace. Had requested for NCSD login. So for this. The $16 each. I'm sorry, it was $6 each staff.
And.
Go ahead Wallace.
Mark. Mark and Aaron can both speak to this. This was something that we were just informed about on Thursday that the North Carolina School for the Deaf, we have been informed that we will be required to pay the NCID cost per staff member. On, and that, what we are being told is that will be $6 per staff member per month, which adds up to a significant amount of money. That's right Candace, $6 per staff per month for NCID logins. And we felt like that it was really important to add this very new update because of the extreme cost that will come to that, that the agency has endured up until this point.
Yes.
Mark, I've got a question on that now. Does, does this mean that your Google mail goes away?
I'm going to refer this to Aaron. He can speak a lot more clear about what NCID is and what it does.
Okay.
He is the North Carolina State system that all state employees have to log into. Every North Carolina State employee has an NCID that they have to use to interface with all the North Carolina State systems, benefits, all that kind of stuff. It has zero to do with emails or Google, any, any of that stuff is not connected to that. NCID does integrate with our Microsoft 365 as a part of the requirements from the state to interface with the Fiori system. Those are all tied in together. Google is completely separate, not having anything to do with the state that we no longer have.
I had a.
Go ahead.
Do I have the floor, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, yeah.
My suggestion was just that we put the total per year here, just to make it clear what we're asking for. If that's not too hard to do. In addition to the per member per month amount.
Aaron, we have to, me, I'm sorry, this is Aaron. Me and Mark will get together and Hannah and calculate all that up to get a final number.
And. And, and this is Mark, I can have that to you potentially by the end of the meeting. That what, because I know that the board would like to be able to submit tomorrow if possible.
Yes, and thank you for that Mark, that will be quite helpful. Okay. Candace, where are we?
Okay, so now we're jumping down. So that last piece. So for the software. That's all of the technical piece there, so we'll have to. Go ahead and take. Over for that, so now Aaron, I don't know if Aaron or who else would want to go ahead and add or expand on this for us. So what do we need for this? What do we need to ask for in regards to the systems?
I'm not, whenever you put in multiple other technological and licensing costs, including domain charges, I mean, we do have to pay for our website, but that currently doesn't funnel through DPI. That's our own thing, so that shouldn't be an issue. Our cybersecurity and antivirus services run through MCNC. MCNC and that service is not going away. They, they provide those services for the entire state, so that won't change. Server and network management, that is not going to change, that's all physical on campus that we, we manage ourselves in-house with assistance from MCNC if needed.
Aaron, I think this came out of Mark's revisions. Mark, this came from your. All of this, multiple other technical.
And me as well.
Interpreter switch please, if we could just take a pause. Thank you.
Yes, and this is Mark and the, the statement, the, the, the statement is a statement, it isn't a request. And so I was wondering if we could make the, and it's a great statement, if we could make the statement into that we would like to request additional funds to support license, other technological and licensing, licensing costs. And then it would give that statement action.
Mark, this is Sandy, do you have a cost?
And this is Mark and, and no, I did, I, I did not come up with this statement originally. On, that is something that we could. On, we could try to look at quickly as we are going through though.
And this is Aaron. And I don't know that we're going to have any new softwares that we need to ask for money for right now, if that makes sense. All of our current school software that we had is, you know, fine and working. The only thing, we're at the end of that, you had additional funding is needed for legal review. I'm assuming you were referring to the vetting process that is now going to fall to the school level. I'll need training for that, but that's already iterated in the paragraph underneath.
Candace is speaking, so Aaron. Do you recommend that we get rid of that portion?
I, I will be fine with that, yes, because it just kind of, you know, there's not a specific ask in there. And then the training part is addressed below.
Okay. Anyone else, any others?
And Dr. Tate, this is Mark. That, the calculation that we needed from above, if you would scroll up above, that number is $10,800. 10. 10,800. 10,800. Perfect. Perfect.
So next. Do you all agree to take that point out? Tammy, you have, Tammy? So did you say that that already, we already have that money? That X amount, do we already have that for training and etcetera? Do we already have that for the cost? Is that already put down? Where's that, where is that? We already have that? Is that up above or are we getting rid of that paragraph? I'm just trying to see, I'm trying to follow.
So Tammy, this is Mark. What, what I gave to Candace was the cost that we discussed about the NCID and that six, that $6 per person per month. And that equaled $10,800. So Candace went back up and added that, that way we would not forget to go back up and add that. Now, I know there's current discussion on the floor about this one statement that is a statement and not a request. And I was thinking that on, the board was having a discussion about whether just to delete the whole thing or formulate it to become a request.
Sandy?
Well, I'm going to make a suggestion here. If there's not additional funding really needed for this except for Aaron's training and we've already addressed the training issue, I say we just take this paragraph out.
Jimmy? This is Jimmy. So I know the, is there a specific amount as far as NCID, as far as staff work? Is that, has that been calculated as for each person? Or just want to make sure that that's clear for all of us as far as, is that, are we included in that staff as well?
And, and Jimmy, this is Mark. I'll be, I'll be happy to answer, yes, that is money we do not currently have. And that's the reason why we're asking for it now because the school will become responsible for that in the future. And we don't, we don't currently have 10,000 extra dollars. So I would like to, I would. So I would like to, I would like to recommend to the board to ask for that additional funds on, to help support the school.
Okay.
Sandy?
Let's make sure we're talking about the same thing. Okay, we got a $10,800 needed for the Microsoft. Now, Mark, I'm going to ask this so that we're all clear. Do you mean that for the paragraph that we just decided to delete, you would need an additional $10,000?
So, and, and this is Mark. And so, but this $10,800 is not for Microsoft. It's not for Microsoft. It's for the NCID login requirements. And then to answer your question, Sandy, no, we do not need an additional 10,000, additional $10,000. Removing that paragraph is fine, and that would be my recommendation to the board to consider, yes.
Well, I think that's what Jimmy was asking about, was if we had money to do that training and everything. So I just wanted to clear that up, make sure everybody understood that. Okay, Candace? Ready to move on?
So can you see that clear on my screen? Everyone see that?
Yeah. Okay, hold up, Candace. Hold up just a second. Let's go back to school planning just a second. Okay.
And, and Candace, this is Mark. I see an error, that's my fault. In the third bullet, it says. It says business department. And that was my fault. That should say facility engineering. Perfect, 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 perfect.
Okay.
Okay, Sandy, where are you?
I'm here. We can move on.
Okay, so the last sentence. Doesn't seem like it really ends or answers the one, two, six part. I'm just a little confused. Wallace, I believe signed, I agree.
And, and this is Mark. And I, I recognize that that sentence needed some, some help as well. And maybe we can use on Leslie's expertise here, but I would first say in that second sentence, the Board of Trustees also needs clarification on 115C, and that should say classified employees. And I would say GS126. Yeah, GS, GS, yes. 126 employees or state employees. As well as the new recommendation for newly hired staff. Or newly hired staff. For newly hired staff. Who will become who will become 115C classified staff.
Jimmy has his hand up. Jimmy? Go ahead, Jimmy. So I just wanted to clarify, as far as the 115C. Is that for the license, the state of like teachers? Or is that 126 not licensed staff? Which one is that? Is that, do we need to put that down or nothing? I'm just wondering.
Candace? The first, Candace, the, the first 115C, that should say certified. Not classified. Perfect. Perfect. Now.
The next one?
Jimmy, to answer your question, teachers who are certified are certified licensed teachers. But new staff that are hired after July the 1st of this year will become 115C classified staff, not GS126 staff. Which is very different and, and gives us great concern. On, but that's the reason why I think the statement is perfect. We need real clarification about what does it mean when the board is going to make recommendations for hire? And we will have three on classifications for staff that'll be running through HR with different rules for all three. And I mean, Leslie can speak more in depth about that, but it, it will be incredibly confusing with staff having different, on different rules. We already have two, but adding three will be very difficult for leadership staff.
Sandy?
Yeah, I think that's why this statement was in here anyway, is that all of this is probably going to end up being quite the nightmare for HR. Leslie, do you have any additional information for the board on any of this? We don't need to go into a training session, but.
Yeah, this is Leslie. So no, and Mark said the biggest issue is all three are going to be different. So 126 are covered by the Office of State Human Resources policies. 115C certified are going to be State Board of Education, and then 115C classified. It's going to fall in there somewhere in between. So keeping up with who is in what role, so we know how we need to do certain things such as hiring, interviews, separations, this plan areas, they're all different. So it's just going to be a lot to keep up with which employee is what designation, other than we know 115C teachers, that's easy, but the new employees coming in, those that are grandfathered in. It'll just be a lot, but we, even if there, we will be able to take care of it, but it can be confusing.
We do an interpreter switch?
Candace?
Okay, this is Candace. So hopefully we'll get more clarification and guidance as well from the legislation. In regards really to how we'll go, move forward with this, and then how we also as a board can support the schools during that process, so. Great.
Okay, Candace, we can move on to the next one, I think.
So do we need to do anything to this here?
I don't think so. We just, we haven't had time to go through any of that.
Okay. So my question is that this paragraph again. So the wording here, is that detailed enough? Is that set, you think?
This, this is Sandy, and this came directly from the lawyers as far as funding the transition. The dates, how it should be set up. So I, it's in a talus because we took it straight from what they sent to us. So I don't think we should do anything with it, just let it go and see what comes out of it.
Okay. Now for the budget. So as far, as far as that, Wallace, whatever his suggestions are to do any edits or changes, do you feel like we need to do anything to the phrasing for this? Wallace, any thoughts or anyone else?
Nothing from me, this is Wallace, I think.
Okay, go ahead, Hannah.
This is Hannah. I just have a clarifying question. It says even before July 1, 2024, the board should be able to review the budget for 2425. So our budget for 2425 is based on, you know, the governor's office signing that deal. So for example, the budget didn't even get passed this year until November. So unless it passes prior to July 1, we don't even have a way for you to review that. So I'm not sure about the wording there, because again, that depends on, you know, what the House says, what the Senate says, and then the governor has to sign off on that.
Well, I think, this is Sandy, I think that was something else that came from the lawyers. We can. I don't know, let's see. We can take out just the before July 1. I perfectly well understand how budgets can end up being in December even before they get there. So we could just say that the board should be able to review the budget for 2425. I think that would be sufficient. Candace, is there any?
And this is Ray. Wallace, did you want to say something?
No, I'm good.
Okay, great. This is Candace, move down. I don't know, what do you all think? Really, it's up to you. We've mentioned this three times now, this will be the fourth.
That's probably good. When you're, when you're asking for money, the more you say it, the better off you are.
Right, the repetition, okay, I mean, okay. Any other comments?
And, and Candace, this is Mark. On the only comment that I wanted to go back to was the concern that was brought up on page three. About, at the bottom of page three.
Here?
Yes, at the bottom of page three on, I, we, I recognize now that you deleted number five. Perfect. I know that that was a little bit concerning to those, those staff members, Hannah, Aaron. And you're right with your statement, most of the time it's a dotted line. So we'll see, we'll see what they say about that. And then the only other thing that I know that is in there two times is that Hannah brought up the discussion about the recurring for, for legal fees, and did the board make the decision to leave that recurring?
No, I, Mark, this is Sandy, I put a non-recurring amount there, but I will tell you this, and I'll tell the board this. We originally talked about $200,000 for that. And Chris and the other lawyers decided that if we were in a situation where we had a suit or anything against the school, we could come up very, very short. And I asked him to find out if we were in any kind of situation now, and we are, we have one case before the Attorney General. Chris is looking into that, but the 400,000 is there because we just don't know what we're facing after July. And until we know more about what we're doing, then, yeah. But we'll put it in as a non-recurring, the lawyers are the one that asked for a recurring 400,000.
Okay, and this is, it just, it just still says recurring on the, on the report, and it says recurring and it says recurring on the final page. If the board is making a decision to change that per Hannah's recommendation to non-recurring, then we would just want to make that little change on, on the first bullet under essential funding essentials?
Yeah, I've got it on, I've got it on mine for a clean copy, Mark. Yeah, I'm taking notes as we go through. Candace, do you see where he's talking about? On funding essentials, the first bullet, instead of saying a recurring 400,000, we just put non-recurring in that.
And Sandy, I had a question on that whenever.
Okay.
Whenever it's my turn.
You can go ahead. We're just making piping changes. Go ahead, Wallace.
So on that point. I understand the logic of having it be non-recurring, and I totally understand Hannah's really relaying what she heard from the Budgetary Office, maybe more than it was Hannah's recommendation, but I understand the logic. I just, without having talked to the lawyers, I'm wondering if they didn't have a reason why they put recurring, and we, do we want to maybe just confirm with them before we change that? I'm wondering if maybe what they're thinking was, is that we know we will have some legal fee, budget needs in future years. We just may not know, you know, how much they'll be until, you know, we have more experience with it. But we know it will be a significant amount, and so rather than having to come back and ask for more starting at zero next year and for future years, does it make sense to at least be starting from, let's say 400,000, and maybe that's why they recommend recurring? I'm just raising that question.
Well, this is Sandy. Wallace, that was exactly what the lawyers determined, is that it should be a recurring 400. Is that it should be a recurring four hundred thousand because we don't know. We have no idea what next year holds. We could go in on July first and by July fifth be facing a lawsuit. I mean, we, we just don't know. And
Yeah.
To them, they figured it'd be better safe than sorry. If you don't use it, you can back up a little bit. But if, if you go to zero and you need it, then uh the thought was that we probably wouldn't have to pay the Attorney General, but we do.
Well, based on that, I mean, I've, I probably lean towards keeping it as recurring.
Yeah, I, I think we should follow the lawyer's recommendations. And um, just because they have, they've been, they've been through this, and like I said, we started out with a two hundred thousand dollar ask. And decided that, you know, we should move it up to four hundred thousand just in case because just like now, we are really tight on being able to pay our lawyer. I'd hate to think we got into a lawsuit and we couldn't pay anybody to defend us.
Do other board members have an opinion on this? Are other board members okay with changing this wording back to say recurring?
And, and this is Mark, and I actually agree with the recurring and added that on my draft correction. I just wanted to make sure that the, the discussion, excuse me, uh, you're right, Wallace, the the recommendation from, from Hannah's direction. I mean, we had a, I think we've had a robust discussion, and I have to agree with the board members that I think that it's a starting point and starting from zero would be very difficult.
Okay, will the rest of the board please speak up and let us know how you feel about this? Tammy, you've got your hand up.
This is Tammy, a little bit off topic, um, really, uh, but I'm really concerned about the liability insurance, and we don't see it mentioned here, anything about the cost of liability insurance, at least. I don't see it listed here at all.
Um, and, and this is Mark, and Tammy, thank you for bringing that up. I actually have a meeting that is set up on Monday with Surry, S U R R Y Insurance Company. And that is per Chris Campbell's recommendation. And they have a meeting set up with me to begin that process to give us a quote. So it certainly that would, that could be one bullet point that the board could consider driving down to where it says board expenses and ensuring that in that section, it says liability insurance. And then that would be.
We had, we had a uh, a paragraph in here about the liability insurance. Not sure where it has gone, but we did have that in here. And that is a very important point uh that um.
So Candace, if you would just add, Candace, if you would just add a fifth bullet and then add board insurance.
Right here?
No, uh, we need to take non-recurring out of the first bullet, Candace.
Yep. Boom, boom, boom.
I didn't hear a negative on that.
Perfect.
And then um, go over to board funding.
Wait, go all the way down?
Yes.
There.
Do an interpreter switch?
Yes.
Now.
Okay, we already have it in the summary, Mark. I knew I saw it somewhere. Uh, it's number eleven on the summary at the very beginning, but we can, we can reiterate it right here, Candace, where you've got your bullet. And uh, the lawyers actually put in, unless funded, provided through DPI, provide funding for general liability and D O, D N O insurance. So uh, we could just have a bullet there stating that uh, funding for the insurance. I think what the lawyers are trying to do is um check about um whether or not we are covered in any other ability. Uh, I would say liability and Board of Directors insurance. It's actually a Board of Trustees, but it's called uh. It's a liability insurance. Okay, we have been through the bill, the report. Does anybody have any uh major things that they want to call attention to before we go for a motion on this? I see it's shaking. No, uh, do I have a motion that we approve this and get it cleaned up and get it ready to send?
So moved.
Thank you, Wallace. Is there a second? Jimmy, was that a second?
Yep, yep, Jimmy. Yep, I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, make it known by raising your hand. And then oppose likewise? If not, we will send this report in to the legislature. Uh, I just want to make one comment about this report. Our first report was sort of a, a reaction to what DPI had said was being done for the transition. This report was not really our report. The Board of Trustees, this was really a report to meet the needs of the school in the transition period, and the lawyers and school directors pretty much drove this report. I do want you to be thinking about, we have one more report to give to the legislature in July. And in that report, I would like for the board to be thinking about the things that have been done for us for this transition, the things that haven't been done for us in this transition. How we all kind of feel like we, nothing's really been clear to us yet. Uh, and we're going to attempt to spend the next couple of months getting to know the school and getting to know uh, the way things operate and how our students are benefiting, benefiting from that. Uh, because I think after all, we're all here for the students. Um, our next meeting date is April ninth. I want to go through a few things before uh we adjourn. We will at that time approve four sets of minutes. Uh, all of our sessions have been working sessions, so we haven't been voting on anything, but February thirteenth, February twenty second, March fourth, and today's minutes. Uh, we will meet in main building at um, the receptionist desk at two thirty for a tour of the school. I'm sorry, Tammy, I just now saw your hand. You have a question?
Yes. So as far as before the process, as far as before the meeting, April ninth, um, are you going to email or send um, as far as the name, a clarification on that as far as? Maybe I misunderstood. How many interpreters trying to get clarification? So as far as suing, as far as email and sending that uh yesterday or two days ago, as far as sending, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I misunderstood?
Yes, uh, there is a, there is an action against the school, and Chris, our lawyer, is getting the details of that, and he has even asked if the attorney, if someone from the Attorney General's office will come and explain to the board in great detail what that entails and how it came to be. I don't have any, any more details of, of it than this. And uh, so he is waiting for an answer from the AG's office that will come next week. Um, so it will be, and as soon as we know that, you, he is going to notify the entire board at the same time. It will not come just to me. It's going to come to the whole board so that everybody knows. Okay? And uh.
Thank you.
Yeah, because this is very important to us uh coming in in July on this. Um, but anyway, back to April ninth, that will be a regularly scheduled meeting. It will be a business meeting. Uh, we'll have a training session with our lawyer, Mr. Campbell, at three thirty. That will be in Hoffmeyer Cafeteria. It will be open, it will be an open meeting, same as our open meeting scheduled at four thirty. Uh, I have asked that um the school principal and um, the school improvement team come and give us a report on curriculum and um accountability and uh some of the things that are going on with our students. Um, we also um will be able to discuss uh, as, as a beginning in, in uh discussion on an ASL uh policy. Um, so does anybody have any questions, any suggestions or anything they want to add to that, Candace?
So I want, I want to ask the deaf, the deaf members, Jimmy, Ray, everyone, do you as far as working together, collaborating with Mark and Aaron for setting up like beforehand? So I wanted to ask if maybe we could go to the school like the day before to set up, to see everything, see where to put things, make sure everything's clear, make sure everyone understands that uh everything, so it's coordinated beforehand, um, before the, you know, so it, when we're ready at go time. Um, so I want to suggest that.
And this is Mark.
Oh.
And, and Mark. And, and Candace, this is Mark. Absolutely. We will, we will coordinate a time with any of the four of you that would like to come. And then we will have our IT department right there to support on any recommendations, hundred percent.
Thank you, thank you. And then Ray, um, so I have a suggestion that people on the board you know, that are involved in the school also use um, uh as far as uh the shirts, so it's clear, uh, dark shirts contrasting the color, you know, so we can see hands that we can match, um, so that way they have good colored shirts as far as using sign language, um, just to be more visual, uh, better for visualization and for everybody. So if that's possible, everyone they can see the hands uh more clear. So that's just kind of an idea that I thought of that I'd throw out there.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate that.
Uh, Jimmy, Jimmy?
I'm sorry.
So I have an emphasis from before, an experience that I have from uh the school as far as different people coming in to our school onto the campus and noticing that, you know, a lot of them don't sign. So that come up in most of the deaf schools around, you see they'll have a sign that has some, you know, like a poster board or something like that that says signs on it. Um, so I don't know if you guys agree with that as far as come, you know, if they come in and there's nothing and they don't know it's a deaf school. You know, maybe not knowing that they emphasize sign language in the building as far as having like a sign outside, just kind of emphasizing that it's ASL all the time. Um, so we have full access. Because before, you know, that happened where you know, they didn't, hold on. They, they didn't know um the importance of the emphasis of the language, and they didn't know that they were driving into a deaf school. You know, that, that they were, they require signing um ASL. So you know, just that communication access in general as far as for our deaf children to see that. You know, I just want to emphasize that.
Thank you, Jimmy. Okay, does anybody have anything else that'd like to add before we adjourn? Tammy?
So are we going to be eating together on the night? Like dinner or, I just need to know if I need to make my plans. You know, as far as driving and everything, uh, do you know what we'd be eating or anything together? Just, I know people, you know, in the community, many people. Like if you plan to eat together or something, I want to put that down.
And and, and Tammy, this is Mark. Tanya and I are going to get in contact with you uh about, just about asking what day and time that you are coming, because we would like to set up uh some times with some leadership members and to make sure that you get to zip around the school on.
I confirmed um our meeting time. That day is at ten o'clock in the morning. Uh, did you get that? I already emailed, Tanya? I was wondering about dinner.
Yeah.
Like, are we going to be meeting like at four thirty? Like, does, as far as a board meeting, as far as the ending, like, what time will that end?
Oh.
Tammy, this is Sandy. I think that we'll be able to address a little more clearly closer to the ninth. It's going to be a, a long day for everybody, so not real sure what will work out for that. Uh, good possibility, we might could do something the night before if you're coming in, not sure when you're arriving, but we can, we can discuss those things um, a little bit later.
I'm arriving on Monday. About six hour drive. So about a six hour drive to get in.
Okay. Well, we'll be in touch with you before you leave to come, so we'll uh, we'll work something out there. Does anybody else have anything else they need to discuss or talk about?
Mickey has a hand up.
I just wanted to thank those uh people outside of the board, um, Leslie and Hannah and Drew and Aaron who've helped us get this together. We can't do it without you and really appreciate you giving up your time, valuable time at work to, to be here with us. So appreciate it very much.
Well, Wallace?
I was just adding a, a applause reaction to Mickey's comment. I agree. Thank you all very much. It's a team effort.
And this is Sandy. I hope we can continue to do this. It's been very helpful. Uh, you all speaking to us got all of this started. It got the report started. Uh, so we do appreciate all of the input, and hopefully we can have more discussions in the very near future as we move toward July first. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Okay, do I have a second? Tammy, I'm going to take yours as a second. Your hand went up at the same time. Okay, thank you all very much. Appreciate you. Everybody have a good evening.
Bye.
Bye bye.